This evening, both you all here in chamber and those who are visiting online, I now call to order the April 7, 2022 Regular Board of Aldermen Meeting. If you would, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Becker.
Here.
Alderman Rucker. Alderman Schuman.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Here.
Alderman Moreauz.
Here.
Alderman Osteen.
I am here.
Mayor Oliveri.
Here. All right, we do have a quorum. Our first item, as always, is Mayor's Communication. And we do have two proclamations this evening, and I will read those proclamations. The first is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April 10 through the 16th, 2022, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services; and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property; and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Osage Beach 911 Communication Center; and whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contacts our citizens have with emergency services; and whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety; and whereas public safety telecommunications of the Osage Beach Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients; and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their jobs in the past year. Now therefore, I, John Oliveri, Mayor of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, do hereby proclaim the week of April 10 through April 16 as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Osage Beach in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. All right, the next item is a proclamation, National Volunteers Week. Whereas National Volunteers Week is an opportunity to recognize and honor the countless individuals who selfishly invest in the lives of others; and whereas volunteers are finding unique and innovative ways to spread joy and meet the emotional, physical, and spiritual needs of others, even while adhering to social distancing measures; and whereas every day volunteers help shape the policies that keep our city moving forward in the right direction, and their impact can be felt throughout the community; and whereas there are thousands of volunteers in our community who give their time and efforts to help others through their church, excuse me, community organizations, service clubs, schools, hospitals, charitable organizations, and other worthy endeavors; and whereas our city government could not function without volunteers who serve on our boards, commissions, and committees; and whereas volunteers are motivated by the simple satisfaction of helping their fellow citizens and making their community a better place to live. Now therefore, I, John Oliveri, Mayor, do hereby proclaim April 17 through the 23rd, 2022, as National Volunteer Week in Osage Beach, Missouri, and urge citizens to join me in this special observance with appropriate events and commemorations. In addition, Osage Beach had the opportunity last Tuesday to recognize our volunteers and to thank them for serving on our boards, committees, and commissions, for their time that they share, for the detriment of our community, stepping up to address issues. They're not always easy or popular. We, the Board, would like to express our appreciation to all volunteers. As mentioned earlier, city governments could not function without volunteers. In fact, few community organizations really can. Right, and I have just one other comment that I'd like to make, and it's regarding the elections. I'd like to congratulate our newly-elected Alderman, Kelly Schuman. Kelly has been serving in the capacity of a position that was vacated, but this is her first elected time on the board. I'd also like to welcome back our two returning Aldermen and the new mayor for their successes at the poll on April 5. All right, we move on now to Citizens' Communication. This is time set aside on the agenda for citizens and visitors to address the mayor and board on any topic that is not a public hearing, and there is one public hearing on tonight's agenda. For those here in person, speakers will be restricted to three minutes unless otherwise permitted. Minutes may not be notated or transferred from one speaker to another. Visitors attending via online will be in listen-only mode. Any questions or comments for the mayor and board may be sent to the City Clerk at tberrth@osagebeach.org no later than 10:00 a.m. on the board meeting days, which are the first and the third Thursdays of each month. Submitted questions and comments may be read during the Citizens' Communication section of the agenda. The board will not take action on any item not listed on the agenda, nor will it respond to questions, although staff may be directed to respond at a later time. The mayor and board of Aldermen welcome and value input and feedback from the public. Is there anyone here in person who would like to address the board this evening? If so, if you haven't already signed in, there is a form at the microphone in front of the dais. Please come forward.
Okay, several things. I've had lift pump failure at my home for one of the lift stations for the sewer, and it was because the controller box was sitting up on the road. One of the neighbors backed out of the driveway, hit it, causing that pump to go from a three-legged system to a two-legged, which means that the emergency light didn't come on, and the gray water came into my basement, into my bathroom, and flooded my downstairs. Blankets and comforters and towels and everything else, we could absorb that, but it caused a lot of damage to a brand-new bathroom. I called the city on it, and the city came out and put a metal post in front of it so it would never happen again. I didn't sue the city. I ate the deductible. But in any case, you guys came out and paved the road out there a few months ago, removed that post and that box, and put another system in place with no protection whatsoever, and I've got pictures of it here, okay? No protection. Same location, same thing can happen again. Next time it happens, if the city doesn't come out and fix that, we're going to have problems. We're going to have legal issues. That's number one. Then we have TIFs. We don't need any more TIFs being handed out, okay? The TIFs that worked fine when you wanted to bring business in, when this place was small, and it wasn't nothing here. Now you have a lot of businesses in place, it's busy on the other side of the bridge. You don't need TIFs anymore. That's just giving away money. This thing about downsizing construction lots to build duplexes, we don't want duplexes. We want single-family homes, and we want those lot sizes to remain the same the way they have been. Now, on this side of the bridge, we have a food desert. All your grocery stores are on the other side. We have nothing on this side, Dollar General, if you want to call it, food source. Nothing has been done by the city council to try and draw in any businesses over here for that, because I approached you guys almost three years ago about getting all these down here, and nobody lifted a finger to try and do it. Then we have the empty McDonald's building sitting down there. McDonald's is not going to let any competition come in there. So that building's just going to sit there and fall apart. We need to do more about cleaning up some of these businesses, and even in the residential areas, they could use some of that, too. Junk collectors and empty buildings, okay? They're not helping bring in business, if that's what you want to do. So I guess that $40 thing that's been waived now, that $40 fee for the water heater installation?
Correct.
Correct. The fee has been eliminated. We are still going to, you know, require that the work be inspected.
Be inspected?
Yes.
Well, how would you know if a water heater had been put in, then?
We don't. We didn't before. You know, we would certainly hope that, you know, that you would follow the regulations of the city. But as far as the fee, the fee has been eliminated.
Yeah, and the other thing, too, is your fees for people building onto their homes, their existing homes, is ridiculous. It's through the roof. I mean, a guy wants to add onto his car, he's got a carport, and he wants to add sides onto it. You make him dance through hoops, get various permissions, got to get variance, got to get this, got to get that. It's costing him thousands more to do it than it should, and I blame that on the city, too, okay? It's just full of red tape. As long as they're within their own property and they're not tearing anybody else's property down, value or anything like that, I don't understand what the problem is here, why you got to charge so many astronomical fees. The other thing is trying to get an inspector to a new construction site is like pulling teeth from a horse. I don't understand what the problem is with that either. I've had contractors tell me it's easier to ask for forgiveness than it is for permission when it comes to the city of Osage Beach. So that needs to be addressed. Anyway, that's my going-away gift for you.
Thank you, Mr. Calvino. It's always a pleasure to have you here with us.
You bet.
As far as the issue on your sewer, we'll certainly, you know, get somebody out and take a look at that.
I've got pictures of it here if you want to see.
I think we can probably find it, and if we have any questions, I think we know how to get in touch with you. Mr. Harmison.
All right, thank you. I've already signed in, but my name is Michael Harmison, for those who don't know me, and thank you so much for electing me for the next mayor of Osage Beach. I did receive a very nice congratulatory letter from our city administrator. Thank you, Gina. I do have a couple of concerns I want to address tonight, and if you don't have an answer, if you can let me know. The letter, the first sentence said, "Congratulations being elected. As you probably know, the certification and swearing-in are yet to be determined," and it goes on to say, "likely the swearing-in could be as early as May 5 Alderman Board I know nothing about this process. People reached out to me and said, "A month away from election before you're sworn in? Why is that?" Well, that's what I'm told.
I do have an update for you.
So I started to do my own research, and a judge approached me, an attorney approached me, and they said, "This is highly unusual," and they didn't know what was going on. And I don't want to accuse anything. So I did my own research. I did receive the 2022 book that has all of the information as far as budgeting and lists procedures. I did go down today to the Camdenton Circuit Court, excuse me. I first called the Missouri Ethics Commission and said, "Hey, is this customary that it takes a month after elections?" Well, that has nothing to do with us. So they suggested going to the Camden County Clerk. So I went to the clerk, and the clerk informed me that it's state law that the Friday after the election, by noon, they need to certify the election. And I said, "Well, do you have many problems with the election?" Very seldom, but by noon, that has to be certified, and we'll post it on the website. So from that meeting, I was talking to another attorney, and they said, "It's, again, highly unusual. Why they're waiting so long? We have no idea." And the Osage Beach Code states, "Successor takes office when elected and qualified." Well, I was elected by the City of Osage Beach. Certification will be by noon tomorrow. My concern is, and if you look at the 2022 Budgeting Operations Book, it clearly states in this book that the mayor is elected by the qualified voters and holds an office for a period of two years until a successor is elected and qualified. I've been elected by the City of Osage Beach. I will be qualified by noon tomorrow, and according to this, too, the current mayor, along with three Aldermen, as of the end of this month, it says their term expires April 2022. It does not say what date in April, so let's say it's April 30. So this letter to me says, "We could be installed as early as May 5." Who's going to run this city from May 1 till May 5, May 20, May 30? You won't have a quorum come May 1. So my suggestion is, my request is, we have plenty of time. I've been elected. You, three Aldermen, have been elected. We need to be certified, and we also need to be installed by next meeting, the 21st. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Harmison, in reference to that, the city, we have to wait until the counties get us their letters of certification. Last year, like I told you earlier, they didn't get it till June. Why? I don't know. I mean, when they get it in the mail, they send it. I have talked to Miller County, and he is going to be, Clinton is going to be emailing it to me tomorrow afternoon. Camden County was already closed by the time I got a chance to call them, so I will call them first thing in the morning, and hopefully I can have all that. If I do get all of those letters by email, I will have it, we will put it on the next agenda, and have it certified, and have it all done by the next meeting.
Well, I hope so, and we won't have a quorum after the 30th.
Well, I will do my best to get it on our next agenda.
Anything else? Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. If the board desires, the consent agenda may be approved by a single motion. Tonight's agenda consists of the minutes of the Board of Aldermen Meeting, March 17, 2022, and the April 7, 2022 Bills List. Are there any questions, comments, or proposed revisions? With none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Alderman Moreauz, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Schuman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved. We move on to unfinished business. Our first item is requesting a second reading by title only of Ordinance Number 2212, an ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri authorizing the mayor to execute construction with Stockman Construction Corporation for the Autumn Lane Improvements in an amount not to exceed $192,999. The first reading for the unfinished items on tonight's agenda was approved at the March 17 meeting. Are there any comments from the Assistant City Administrator?
No, sir, I have nothing to add.
All right. With none, are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve second reading? Alderman Becker, do I have a second? Alderman Ross, roll call, please.
Alderman Schuman.
Yes.
Alderman Becker.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
All right, the second reading passes. Our final unfinished item is requesting a second reading by title only of Ordinance Number 2213, an ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending Ordinance Number 21.78, adopting the 2022 Annual Operating Budget Transfer Funds for necessary expenses for the Autumn Lane Improvement Project. Any comments from the city administrator?
No additional comments.
Any questions from the board? With none, is there a motion to approve second reading?
So move.
Alderman Moreauz, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alderman Osteen, roll call, please.
Alderman Moreauz.
Yes.
Alderman Schuman.
Yes.
Alderman Becker.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
All right, the second reading passes. Our first item of new business is a presentation by Kristy Wilson with Horner &amp; Schiffer on the Tantera Sewer Assessment Project. Before Ms. Wilson presents, are there any comments from the Assistant City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. On April 15, 2021, the board did approve the city to contract with Horner &amp; Schiffer to assess the condition of the sewer infrastructure in the Tantera Estates area. That assessment has been completed with guidance from the Department of Natural Resources in an effort to identify costs of the repairs, upgrades to the system, and viability of loan and/or grant opportunities through DNR. Kristy Wilson is here with us today, and I will now turn it over to Kristy to provide a report to the board. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. The purpose of the presentation tonight is to give you a summary of what we identified through the sewer assessment in the Tantera Estates. Just a brief discussion of the agenda for tonight. We're going to go through the purpose, the inspections that were completed through the project, some proposed improvements that were identified, and then the costs for the improvements, and then some funding options that may be available to the city once the project has been solidified. So the purpose of the project, the city took over the sewer system within the estates many years ago. It's an aging system. We were tasked with utilizing the grant funding dollars to investigate the sewer system and just kind of get a better handle on the condition of what exists today. Throughout the last three years, there's been multiple sanitary sewer overflows within the collection systems that have been reported to the state as required, but it indicates that there is operational issues within the system. Access to pump stations and the sewers themselves are problematic. There's been emergency maintenance, which is costly, and then the location of the sewer, some of the sewers are located actually under the structures, which makes maintenance even more difficult. So our purpose was to identify as much of the condition of the system as we could within the limits of the grant funding. So our inspections included survey and manhole inspections, so we surveyed and located the structures that were able to be located. We completed inspections for condition and structural integrity of those structures, and then we completed smoke testing, CCTV inspections, and then a review of the 17 lift stations that were actually in the estates. From the survey and manhole inspections, we inspected 62% of the structures, which included 96 of the 153. Several of the structures were not able to be located. That's why 100% was not inspected, and we were also limited by the funds available and the grant funding, and our purpose was to utilize the funds available to get as comprehensive of a look at the system as we could. Some of the things that we found were non-standard square manhole structures. Standard for most manholes is round, which doesn't seem like a big issue, but when you start doing smoke testing and other inspections, when you have something square, it makes things more problematic for maintenance. It's just not the norm. Out of our inspections, we found 25% of those that were inspected needed some sort of rehabilitation. This was for leaks, cracks, any in structural integrity of the structures themselves. So what we did, since we didn't inspect every single structure, we applied that percentage to the entire system to kind of get a handle on what improvements were needed. Smoke testing, we completed smoke testing. It is a nontoxic dye that is pumped into the system. We did, the square structures did present a problem for our staff because they had to retrofit the smoke blowers so that they got a good, tight seal on the system. So that's one of the maintenance issues with the square structures. But we were able to complete smoke testing for 10,000 linear feet of the sewers. The smoke, what we're looking for are, as you'll see in some of the photos up here, leaks around the structure, the manhole structures themselves, caps that may be loose or missing where smoke is coming out of the ground, and that will indicate where stormwater, rainwater is getting into the collection system. So you don't want that excess water into your system. So that's the purpose of the smoke testing. It's looking for the joints or cracks or leaks in the system that could allow excess flow to enter. CCTV inspections, we did complete about 1,750 linear feet of CCTV inspection. Access was critical. We focused our inspections on the elbow K area because it was a known problem area. Some of the things that we found through the inspections, you'll see, we saw roots. This is, a lot of the roots are primarily at the lateral connections to the main sewer, meaning that the joints are not watertight. Roots are looking for water. They're going to get in wherever they can. We found some debris in some of the pipes through the inspection, and then we did find one hole in one of the pipes. The large picture there in the center, we have infiltration coming in through the joint, so it's not a tight system. All this means that you're getting excess water into the sewers that you then have to treat and maintain and could potentially cause problems. The photo in the upper right, you can see the joints of the pipe. The material that was used to construct the sewers is a truss pipe material that's no longer used. It doesn't have the strength of your standard PVC, so the CCTV inspection shows there that you can actually see the joint, so it's completely offset. And then the last photo up there is a sag in the pipe where it is settled, and you don't have the standard gravity flow. So that's the benefits of the CCTV inspection, to actually find these issues. So the proposed improvements that we identified as a result of the inspections, as I stated before, since we did not TV and smoke and inspect every structure, we applied the percentages of what we did find to the entire system. And the goal was to maximize the grant funding to get a comprehensive look at the system. So the first several items on the list kind of all go hand in hand. Since we were only able to TV about 1,750 feet of sewer, we recommend TVing the rest of the system. I think that's a critical piece in determining the extents of the improvements that needs to be done. In conjunction with that, lining the sewers or rehabilitating the sewers to eliminate that excess flow or INI is a cured-in-place liner. You need to TV the sewers to figure out where exactly which reaches of sewer need to be As we found with the TV, the holes, there are some portions of the sewer system that cannot be lined. Holes need to be point repaired, so the TV will tell you where those places, where you actually have to dig up and replace the sewer because it's in a condition that cannot be The next item is realigning sewers to improve access for maintenance. As I said before, there are some sewers that are located directly under structures. Makes it difficult for maintenance, cleaning, and just regular routine access to get in there. Staff indicated they found that there are some bends in the sewer system that have no structures installed at the bends. Through the TV that we completed, we did not find those, but as the staff has been maintaining the system, they know that those exist, so that as you TV the rest of the system, you'll find and locate those. So we included costs for installing new manholes. Rehabilitating the existing sewers or the existing manholes to eliminate inflow and infiltration into those structures and keep that excess flow out of the system. The other recommendation is to pressure test lateral connections to reduce, and grout as needed to reduce the INI. Where the building lateral connects to the main sewer, you often find leaks, so to test those joints and then grout them as they are, as needed. The other thing we did is we looked at all 17 lift stations in the estates for access, improvements, and upgrades. A lot of these don't meet current standards, so we proposed improvements to each of those lift stations. And then the last item on the list is obtaining easements. The easements are not, therefore, a lot of the pump stations and sewers within their, in the estates. So those need to be obtained so that staff has access to those. This graphic just shows the extents of all the improvements, including rerouting some of the sewers to the streets to give staff better access to getting of the sewers to the streets to give staff better access to get in and clean those. A lot of the sewers that are under the structures are located really close to the basement foundations and could cause problems, makes it difficult to clean. As you put the hydro flushers through the sewers, you could push flow back up into the buildings. Then, the big thing, the project cost, how much is this going to cost? And it is a large dollar amount, but please keep in mind that this was extrapolated based on the inspections that we did. So, as the additional investigations are completed, you'll be able to get a better handle on the actual extent that needs to be done. This also includes completing everything that was identified, whereas the city moves forward, this could be broken up into packages and phased in a multi-stage approach. So, this total project cost of about $8 million includes upgrading everything in the system to the city's current standards. Funding options, there's a lot of routes the city can take, and this is something that will have to be discussed, especially once the project is identified and solidified for moving forward. American Rescue Act, Plan Act funds, the city, or the state of Missouri is actually in the process of appropriating additional, or releasing funds for this. There's a training class later this month, and then applications are set to be open next month, so mid-May, and then there's a 60-day period, application period, and then a 90-day review period. So, that is an option. The benefit there is you will need an engineering report, which you now have, and it has been approved by the state of Missouri. So, that is an option. Clean water state revolving funds, there are grants and available for this purpose as well. And the USDA Rural Development also has funds available. Both those options require bond issues. So, as the project gets solidified by the city and the plan to move forward, then you can look at those options. But they do require bond funding for that. And then the other options that the city has at your disposal is always private financing, and then just to utilize the user rates to fund the improvements over time.
And I will take any questions.
All right, thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Are there?
I got one.
Alderman Ross.
Yeah, so my question is around the project costs, two lines that I found interesting. And there were new simpler simplex, which were single pump grinder lift stations, 26 of them at $20,000. Okay, I assume those are for one to two residences in most cases. Is in mind the ballpark here is what those are for?
Yes, as the sewers needed to be relocated to get them out from under the structures, there are a few structures that can no longer connect by gravity, so they would need grinder.
Okay, and then there's another line item, pump station rehab, 16 of them at 200,000 apiece, and that's a rehabilitation of what I perceive to be some type of existing lift station central collection point. Are these much larger? Are they various in size? Are they large in size? $200,000 for rehab seems like a lot to me, although I've talked to Dave, and Dave's not convinced it's that much. The delta between those two numbers, I find confusing at this point. So, can you provide any clarity?
Yes, well, the grinders are just for an individual home, so as you said, it's very small. The other 17 lift stations throughout the Estates, and one of which has already been upgraded, so the 16 in the project cost, they are duplex stations. They vary in size, but they are significantly larger. So, you need, that includes pump replacement, rehabilitation of the concrete wet well where the sewage is stored, and then also upgrade, potential upgrades to the electrical systems for the new pumps.
Do we have any idea how large, the largest one is?
I don't remember the horsepower off the top of my head.
Or the gallonage? If you don't know, you don't know.
I don't know, I don't know off the top of my head.
And then the other question I don't know is as much to you, but is there a lot of easements here? I'm surprised that we don't have easements on something that we own, and how does that happen?
Well.
I know, this has been going on for a long time.
This system was taken in in the 80s. It was probably a very, we wouldn't write the contract like we would today.
Fair enough.
And because of the land ownership at the time and the way that land was set up, if you look at the plats today, there's still some circles. When we acquired the system back in the day, you know, not blaming the past people, we didn't get easements like we would today. And because of the ownership and all that, that will be a very time-consuming and expensive task, but it will definitely have to be an important.
Sooner or later, you have to pay. That's all I have, thank you.
To answer your question, Mr. Ross, I think the largest horsepower station in Tantera is 125 horsepower. So, there are some larger ones there.
Okay.
And a grinder is probably anywhere two horsepower, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions? Ms. Wilson, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We appreciate it very much. Mike, are you going to share some additional information with us?
The only thing I want to add while he's walking back up here, in my comments, I just want to reiterate, this has to be the very, very first stage. Like she mentioned, we do need further planning, project details, timelines, which that's where Cochran will come in. And this was really the first step that I need to start, really analyzing the funding and financing options. I know I sent out a very lengthy, complicated ARPA memo today, that will be part of the conversation. Just like she had also said, we still have a lot of unknowns from the state, but as soon as they push that out, deadlines will be tight. This, along with some of those ARPA draft projects, will be part of those conversations, and a combination of user rates. It's going to take a combination of things, it's complicated, but more will be forthcoming because we do need to identify more direct timelines, more direct, you know, project scopes than to have the conversation on us. How do we finance this? What's our timeline? How long would this take?
The only thing that I would add, sir, is, you know, there's another big issue that we have to tackle out there that I know I've spoke with several of the aldermen about is access. And there are some cases in Tantera where you're looking at stations that are halfway down a hill, that hill is at a 45-degree angle, and there is no access. And some of those issues will have to be resolved even before we can rehab some of these stations. So, that's just another thing to consider as we go through this. I know, Chrissy, you built a lot of that cost into a lot of those numbers, but we have to be able to get our, have safe, safety in mind, and make sure that our guys can pull these pumps up these hills, get these pumps down to these stations when they need to be maintained, and that is one of the other major issues.
Can I ask just for a show of hands, how many folks are here this evening for this particular issue? Okay, I kind of figured that. Let me just say this, this is just the initial stage, this is the identification stage. Excuse me. There's a lot of work that's going to have to be involved in this. And as we start moving through this, I think the city administrator indicated, one of the key issues is going to be funding for this. You know, what available funds are there? Quite frankly, I think it's really good that we started this process last year. The ARPA funds that you have heard mentioned, these are funds that, you know, were brought about as part of the COVID and all of the other issues, you know, surrounding, you know, funds coming from the federal government. Those funds will flow through the state, and then the state has gotten some significantly large funds, and they are looking at how to make those funds available for different types of projects. And as Ms. Wilson had indicated, you have to have an engineering study, you know, to, you know, support your needs there. So, the issue of that is, the funds just have to be expended by 2026, correct?
It has to be obligated by 2024.
By 24 and spent by.
And then check wrote by 2026.
Right. So, we've got some time here, folks, and this, like I said, is going to involve a lot of additional work to determine everything that needs to be done, and the funding and everything else that's involved. As we go through this process, I don't know the best way to do this, except maybe if we can get those of you who are interested in letting us know, we can, you know, get your email address and make sure that you're aware of any meetings that might be associated with this. Anything that we'll do with this, of course, from a board meeting standpoint, that information is on our website, and as we do.
Mike is already doing that.
And Mike's already doing all of that? Okay, so that's.
Yeah, I'm in contact with the homeowners association out there. I have been multiple times over the last year or so, and I will continue to update them and make sure that they're aware of when we will be addressing some of these issues, sir.
Okay, excellent. All right, anything else? For those of you who are here again for this issue, thank you very much for your interest in this. I hope you've gotten some additional information that you find useful, and we will keep you posted as we move forward. Thank you for being with us. Yes, sir?
We will have that out, we'll get that out on our website. Give us about tomorrow, we can put something on the front page and have access. Yep.
Yeah, let you be able to download that. Yes, sir?
Would COVID slush funds have to do with redoing private sewers?
Not COVID slush funds, sir. I mean, COVID started the providing of additional funds from the federal government. This, I think, is part of the.
Well, the ARPA funds, the American Rescue Act Plan that was signed by President Biden back in March in 2021, also, then after that, we had the IIJJ, the, and I apologize, I forgot the names of that, but that was also a recent bill. In those, they have made infrastructure needs very a priority, and with infrastructure means, how do we keep clean water, safe sanitary and waste collection? So, those infrastructure needs are high on the list, not necessarily because of what happened with COVID, but those issues raise the level is our infrastructure needs, the smaller communities all the way to larger communities, infrastructure needs. And so, those are specific categories that are highlighted in both those bill or act signed by the president.
Anything else? All right, if not, we will go ahead and move on. For those of you who are not interested in staying, I'm going to take just a brief second and let you all go ahead and clear the chamber. Thank you again for coming this evening.
I'm just kind of curious, how much of this is going to be spread out, the cost among the people that live in town here that are on that large sewer?
Mr. Cavino, we haven't even started to identify, you know, how these costs are going to be handled, as I said just a minute ago. That's, we're in the very beginning state.
From Tantera, it's not even the city limits, and we're not part of the city, I don't see why I'm going to have to pay higher rates.
All right, thank you for your comment, Mr. Cavino. That's yet to be determined.
I must point to state that Tantera Estates wasn't incorporated in the city when this sewer system was already in place. Basically, the city inherited a failing sewer system, but now the cost to repair that is falling under insurance, obviously you can't bear that as the city 100%.
That's right. All right, I think it's time we can move on. Our next item is a public hearing on rezoning case number 418, Jim Nugent, Harper's Cove Investment Company, city planner.
Yes, good evening. This is a request by Jim Nugent and Harper's Cove Investment Company to rezone 34.1 acres located on Case Road on to Sycamore Valley Drive. The current zoning is A1 agriculture and C1 general commercial. And just a little bit of background on the particular piece that we're looking at, because the idea that you have a piece of agricultural property with basically what looks kind of like a Snickers bar. Okay, let me.
Yeah, give him a minute. Let's see if we can make it just a little quieter in here. All right, go ahead.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So, basically, you know, the background on this particular piece of property is, at one point in time, you know, at least in the 80s and probably before, there was a ferry that docked on this particular piece of property. And when they did the zoning for the community back in the mid-80s, they zoned just a strip of this land that's about 100, you know, feet wide down to the water, general commercial in the middle of basically an agricultural piece of property. So, what the group that we have in front of us today is asking for is to rezone the piece of property in its entirety, the 34.1 acres, to two different zones. The first zone being R1B, which is our moderate-density, single-family residential, okay? If you look at the illustration that I provided you in your packet, you will see that it shows lots down on the frontage and into second tier and third tier properties from the lake frontage up the hill, okay? And the function of what they're showing you there, this is kind of a rough plat of what their plans are to do, which will be something in the neighborhood of 39 single-family residential lots that are greater than 6,500 square foot apiece, okay? And then the remainder of the property will be rezoned R3, which will provide them the opportunity to do multiple different kinds of housing, depending on what their market would be at the time and what the city's needs would be. So, if you remember back in 2020, we amended the R3 zoning so that it could allow small single-family lots on, in the R3 zone. So, instead of having R3 property, which we don't have very much of in the community, which is partially why we have such a housing issue now, it will allow, instead of having basically a single, large, single-family residential development in there, if they want to do single-family, they will have to do 5,000 square foot lots at its largest, okay? That will allow there to be smaller, single-family homes, so that, you know, would be more service industry and workforce-protected housing, give them the ability to answer, you know, some of the housing needs in the area. And as I said, they will do that by way of, you know, the market, whatever they see the market needing and looking for at the time that they go to build that will be partially what, you know, helps them determine what they're going to do. If you do, like I said, look at the sketch that I gave you, what I do want you to understand is, we're not approving, you know, the plat itself tonight. This is just a rough sketch for them, kind of, so we can show you kind of what's on their mind, but they will have to go back through the major plat and subdivision process, which will be, provide preliminary plats, public infrastructure construction plans, which includes, obviously, stormwater streets, water sewer services, all of those things. And that will be the part of the process that would come after this is rezoned, but it will come through the planning commission and back through the board when they want to do the subdivision itself. I will tell you that at the planning commission, the Cars family had some representatives there. As you know, they've got 220 some odd acres that is right next door to that piece, and one of their main concerns, obviously, is stormwater runoff, you know, Sycamore Valley, and their property gets a large part, if not, you know, about all of the drainage from this side of the lake. So, it's, you know, it impacts them greatly. So, one of the things that they wanted to make sure of is that we pay special attention to the stormwater runoff on the property. That will be done as part of the major subdivision plat process. Whoever the owner and developer gets to be their project engineer, that person will have to work with Cochran, who is our engineer, to get those plans put through, put through and put together in conformance with, you know, DNR and our requirements. And I did tell Mr. Cars when he was here that, once it comes in, obviously, it's public record, and that I will let him know when we have it, and, you know, he can come in and take a look at it, and if he's got comments, he can make those comments, you know, they are. You know, they are very knowledgeable people as it pertains to drainage and issues of such. So with that, I took you to the planning commission at our last meeting and brought it with a recommendation to approve. It is a use that reflects exactly what our comprehensive plan and our future land use map calls for, for the piece of property. And with that, the planning commission sent it forward to the Board of Aldermen with a recommendation to approve.
All right. Thank you for your report. Is the applicant or representative here tonight? And if so, would you like to offer any comments? Please come forward.
Can you be silent?
It helps us with record-keeping.
That's the easy part.
Thanks, Melissa.
You're welcome. Well, good evening. My name is Melissa Krantz. I'm actually one of the broker owners of Remax Lake of the Ozarks. We've been here now for over 23-plus years. I'm excited that I do have the developers here along with our survey company, so if there's any questions, we're here for you. But we are trying to address the housing need that we have at Lake of the Ozarks. This is my home, this is where we live and work, and I want good people to come into the area with good experience, and I think we have been fortunate enough to find this group. We just want to make sure if you have any questions or any concerns that we address that. I know last time, Mr. Cars did speak to the water runoff. That's why if you have questions, Shoreline Surveying is here for that. You know, because of our housing need, you will have these developers also having their home sites here at Lake of the Ozarks. You know, and I think we've got the need for it. We don't have houses to sell right now, and we have people that want to be part of our community. So we do have, you know, the drawings you all have yourselves. I do have one. If the public has any questions or concerns, we just want to address that and be part of the city. Is there any questions that you have?
Are there any questions from the board before we open the public hearing?
I have one question for Gary.
Yes.
Did it come unanimous from the P&amp;Z?
It did, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and now I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to comment either for or against this request? If you have not already signed in, please do so before you speak.
I'll comment against it. What are the existing lots now? What were requirements now before this transition for this development?
There are, there are no existing lots now. It is...
I don't understand that it was supposed to be 10,000 square foot.
No, 10,000 square foot is what is required in the R1A zone. This piece of property is currently zoned A1, which is agriculture, and then C1, which is general commercial, which can allow all kinds of things.
That commercial, you said, was just a little scripted.
It is, yes.
So that, you know, I mean, it's not even going to be a big enough building, I know.
Well, you'd be surprised.
My problem with it is, there's no discussion about green belts, there's no discussion about infrastructure costs. What about water? You know, nobody seems to address that. I mean, there are people that are still on wells that are sucking up lake water now, and we're not tapping any new wells, and we're going to bring in all these new houses for, for people that can't afford houses? Is that what we're doing? Is that what we're talking about? I don't understand what the problem is here. It's a nationwide problem with housing right now. No new houses are being built because of the price of materials, okay? So I don't understand why we're making this special effort for this developer to come in, a rezoning.
Well, rezoning is not a special effort. We're not giving them anything. They're asking for a new zoning for the piece of property that will allow them, that will allow them... Will you let, will you let me talk? Okay? You asked the question, I'm going to give you an answer, okay? They're asking for the rezoning so that they can put housing on it. Currently, they cannot, okay? There is, I mean, they will be on city water and sewer, okay? So they won't be, you know, on wells, so you don't have those issues. We have the capacity to handle it. They will be required to put in new roads, new service, you know, and, you know, new stormwater retention for these. As far as I know, you know, they are not asking for any kind of public assistance on any of the construction. You know, I know that you had mentioned Section 8 housing before. This is not Section 8 housing by any stretch. They are going to build single-family homes. There is lakefront, 17 lakefront houses. The lakefront houses, you know...
I promise, the single-family homes, it's the size of lots, and building condensed housing like that, now you're going to start looking like intercity, okay? And that's what happens sometimes.
I wouldn't call it condensed housing, you know, Danny, but...
You're talking, I lived in the city enough to know that 60 by, by 100 lot is 6,000 square foot, and it's small, okay? And that's what we're talking about, smaller than that. You're talking, what, 5,000 square foot?
5,000 square feet, you know, with a smaller home on it, yeah. That would meet, would still have setback requirements, you know? And as far as, as far as green white stuff that you were talking about, you know, every residential zone has required green space, required, yeah, it has required green space, yeah. And any, and any multifamily has required play space.
Yeah, I haven't seen too much of that going on around here, but...
Well, we don't, we don't have...
That's part of the workforce housing problem.
We don't, we don't have very much R3, period.
We don't have enough of it going on around here.
But if you, if you look at any of the newer, you know, multifamily developments that we have, you will see the green, green space and then the play spaces. Hmm?
Didn't you just say there was a shortage, but we didn't have that?
Well, there's a difference between having a shortage and not having any.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I can't...
Well, there, there is, I mean...
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening?
Just a quick question.
Sure, if you, please come up and sign in, if you don't mind. That way, we've, we've got a record of who spoke this evening. Thank you very much.
My question was just clarification on the lot size. Is it, are the waterfront lots and the R1 lots 6,500 square feet and just the R3 segment at 5,000 square foot lots?
Right. The R, the R1 lots are actually going to be larger. They're required to be a minimum of 6,500 square feet, but they will actually be somewhat larger than that. They basically mimic the same size and the same type of layout as Broadwater Bay has right next door to them.
Gotcha, okay.
So that's what you would see on the 17 lakefront lots.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. And yes, sir, I think we've got another gentleman. If you'd come up and please sign in, if you haven't already done so.
First of all, I'd like to agree with this gentleman on the tax increment financing when you need $8 million to work on sewers, and everybody is wanting to come here right now because we are a hot city, and economic development is something we need. But anyway, I'm here representing Cayman Beach Property Owners Association, which is directly across the Cove from the development that we're speaking about. One concern, which I know is Ameren's issue, is the boat docks. We're not sure what they're going to do on that, if there's going to be community, or how many there's going to be, or what there's going to be. The other thing, we've got a great explanation to see me on what kind of conditions we have on our sewage treatment plants in the city. And I enjoyed the education, actually, and it was perfect timing for that, because when you're adding all of the toilets that we are continuing to add in the city right now, with the towers going up down the road here at Topsider, and then we're looking at bringing in more multifamily units and more houses on the lakefront. We have currently 11 houses on the lakefront down there, and they all sit very nice and are all very nice homes. The homes across the Cove are looking very nice. I'm not disagreeing with what they're doing, and they are selling them at an extremely high price right now. Things are crazy, okay, as you all know. We do probably need some housing for people that maybe can't afford it as much to be in the area, but does it need to be there? Also, our roads in the neighborhood, we're doing some things. I live off of Cayman Drive, as you know, off of Nichols. When I come to the right turn, I bounce through ditches. There's a lot of different bad areas of roads. You sand and sealed the roads a couple of years ago, and that was not a very good method. So looking at the different things that are going to go on, we're going to put a lot of additional toilets in the neighborhood, we're going to put a lot of additional cars on the roads. I just feel like the community needs to be cut down to size a little bit more. Are, are there going to be individual docks, is a question? Are they going to put in two big community docks? We've already tried to get the Cove no wake. We haven't really heard back on that. I don't know the situation on that, but at any rate, I'm just here looking at property values across the Cove in comparison to what we will have going in over there. They're getting a little close together down in the front. A couple of houses look pretty nice. Then they brought the one in that's got the slant roof on it with all the windows, and they're sitting on little bitty lots. I think they need to widen those lots out a little bit. They need, need to put in a little nicer home if they're going to do it. We're building homes out on the point out there that are $4 and $5 million, these speculators are bringing in here. I think we need more quality in here rather than low-end things, and I'm not object, we have a lot of nice homes around the golf course right here. They're $400,000 homes, and they will sell like that if you put it on the market, whether you have a boat dock or not, because there are a lot of boat slips on the lake that you can rent. And that can be much cheaper sometimes than owning your own dock. Last bit of information for all of you today that you're really going to like, and I hope you're really going to enjoy this, because no one goes after things like this. We have a person in our community, her name is Laura Mosher. She's been in contact with the federal government right now, with the city of Osage Beach, and many others in regards to turning the golf course over here into a city park, and we've had a lot of positive response. So when this excavating will go on over there, the park may end up being all of ours, and we are plying hard at it, and we've had some very positive response from the Cars over here, and he couldn't believe that Laura actually walked in the door with my wife and said, "We want to have a park." So that's what's going to happen over here, we hope, at the golf course. So, and concern for excavation is another issue. I've, I've been involved in a lot of that myself. I've owned water plants, I've put in DNR-approved wells, I've put in roads, and I've looked at the excavation going on across the road. They need to find somebody else, and that's the last thing I'll say today. Thank you very much for your time and everything that you all do, and congratulations to our community mayor. Thank you, sir.
Melissa, would you like to speak on the type of housing that you're looking at?
No. No, absolutely. So the homes that you're going to see on the waterfront are going to be similar to the high-end homes that are across from Cayman Beach, but it'll just be new construction. So we're not going to put anything low-end. When you look at the cost of the land that they're doing, well, you have to go higher, but I think it's going to complement Cayman Beach very well, because I think it's a beautiful subdivision, so that we don't want to bring anything that's going to hurt the whole pristine area that you have right there.
So the ones they recently just built, they're just shut up right now, the crack of lots is 20 feet away from each other, and they're very compact and compressed, do a very short area. Living in that area as well. The amount of 17 houses going along the opposite shoreline, going down into the Gulf, that's going to create a huge avenue in the summertime for water resort, water fountain, all that piece of stuff. We have a beautiful community right now, it's across the way, we have trees, it's a woodscape, it's very nice. I get that we have a housing shortage here. We're not a shortage, we're full, I'm like, what they consider, but that's all, you know, so. My point trying to be is, we want to make sure if this project does have to happen, that's certainly one, too, but if it does have to happen, how do we follow along, make sure that we're following the current EIRs and the requirements provided by the government to ensure that these developments are followed strictly as...
Sure, no, and I, can you hear me okay? No, and I understand because that Cove has not been touched for a long time. And change, yeah, change is hard, so, but I can assure you they're going to follow the city codes for what everything...
That topic about before we begin to finish, before we begin drawing, if the environmental impact reports, these impact reports will tell us how we, you know, how much wood they can cut in, or how many they're going to, what type of B and B they're best paid for practices will be, when they do all the excavation, all that good stuff. I'm a developer myself, and I know these are the things that are required to do. Keep in mind, I just moved from a place that had zero lots available in their whole city. So that's one of the reasons why a lot of us are coming this way, because we don't want to live 20 foot from our neighbor. You know, we really like here, it's a beautiful place, that's why we came, we paid extra money to add that privacy, living across the water. Now we're slowly by slowly, it's a bike to get out, everybody used to be turned around, there's an ounce, six here, seven there. 29, 39 is going to be here. So then what happens if the golf course didn't become a part, then we got another 15 years that should have turned around. So, appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. Well, they are having a full park over there for this subdivision. I don't know, have you ever seen the elephant rocks that they have there?
No.
So they are amazing. They are keeping that as community ground for this subdivision. So we want to be very conscious of green space.
I'm sure the EIR will let it out, right? Is that my, what, am I correct in saying that, sir?
Yes, everything will have to go through our engineering department, which will control all of, all of the...
You're talking about environmental impact reports, you raised that.
Yes, they will, all of the environmental stuff, and then the water and sewer and, and streets, drainage, all of that will be done by their engineers, and then we'll go through Cochran Engineering, which is the city's contract engineer.
So usually, there's a third-party, usually, the third-party that comes in, does environmental impact report and say, hey, this project can't go forward based on these requirements. That happen or not, it could happen.
We don't, we haven't done any third-party environmental reports on our projects in town up until this point.
Okay.
Okay.
And are you, are you part of the group, or are you just represented as a realtor?
I'm a realtor.
Okay, because you stand to make a lot of money off this deal, so I can understand why you...
Mr. Calvino, Mr. Calvino, there's enough of that.
No, no, no.
Yeah, no, that's really, no, come on.
Bring the developer out here and let them represent themselves.
The developers here, if you have any development questions, they are here to answer those questions, but, you know, don't attack, you know, someone who's here.
It's a fact, though.
Well...
You're going to make a lot of money off this deal, because you're right.
I am, yes. I'm here to help grow the city as well.
Yeah. Well, I helped build the city, okay?
Can you give us an outline on what's going on in the docks?
At this time, I've not been completely decided yet on how to do that yet. So we want to make sure that we have this section done first.
Well, like I had said, we've been trying to get, you know, the code, you know, wake up, you know, success we've had, I'm not sure, oh, we haven't heard back on water control, so I need to say, we haven't heard back on, you know, water control on that, because we just got, we're down into the tight cove, and we got jet skis coming down there, and they could be riding, and they come right inside of our buoy next to our back, and they don't even pay attention to the weight, and you go, hey, stop, but they just keep riding, don't care. And so it's a prefer, and, you know, but, and then they don't care even still, but so the docks are not really, we don't know what's going on there.
It's not in concrete yet. We're trying to look at the different options, but I understand about the code, but I don't know if Ameren's allowing that anymore or not, if they'll give it or not.
Whether it's driven, it doesn't have to be concerned. We're going to plant the houses, and then we're going to deal with the aftermath of the impacts of the lake here. That's our care.
No, it's up to Ameren. We don't have control here at the city, nor do I, unfortunately.
What will the fronts be on lots, putting lots? Will they be 100-foot lots?
Will they be a what?
100-foot lots.
Well, they're, I mean, they're...
Mixed.
Yeah, they're, they're mixed, okay? Because the, because the, the variable shoreline of the Lake of the Ozarks, okay?
Which down there, it's straight.
It, well, about as straight as you get, I guess, to the Lake of the Ozarks, so, yes.
I fish right down, it's pretty much...
I don't know, I rely on Cayman Beach, about 100 feet, is it?
I don't know, but, you know, we're so scattered, everybody's going all over the ground, you can't, I mean, it's so stacked and everywhere, everybody's docks, I mean, there's a dock.
You're, in order to, in order to get the 6,500 square feet that they're required for their lots, okay? What you're going to see is somewhere between 70 and 100 feet varying on the frontage, okay? Some lots, a lot of times, you know, if you look at how lots are put in on, especially on the lake frontage, a lot of times you have kind of a, you know, an octagon that goes this way, and the, the thinner end is on one side, and then so on the next lot, the thinner side's up by the road, and the water is, you know, down by the lakefront, and... know, down by the lake front. And, you know, typically what you see in those particular situations is the one that has a little bit more lake front, costs a little bit more, you know, to purchase, that type of thing. But that's how they end up, you know? But like I've been saying, you know, what we have... What we have here so right now is just a... Basically, what they're kind of looking at doing. The final plats and the final subdivision plan will be done as a separate process, the major subdivision process, where all of the public improvement plans and the drainage issues and all those things will go through the engineering departments. And then the final plat itself will have... Or the preliminary plat itself will have all the water sewer roads, the topography, how the lot layout will be. And then ultimately, the final plat is basically just the plating of the lot line, so they can start transferring title to individual lots. So, you know, I can tell you that, you know, what it shows on here is basically lot widths on the frontage that are between seventy and a hundred feet, but they vary down the line. But that may change, and, you know, whenever they are able to go in and do the actual surveys of everything.
What about Ameren's right away? Does that... How is that affected by that? We were talking about sixty-five hundred square foot lots, and you got to have easement where Ameren has easement rights to the lakefront.
Yeah, well, they will have... They have to build above Ameren's six sixty-two. And then the FEMA requires everything to be built six sixty-five and above. So we don't allow any construction that will...
That's what I wondered, you know? What does that do to the lot size?
Yeah, it... Well, I mean, they have to meet setbacks, which would be twenty-five on the front, ten on the sides, and twenty in the rear. But they still have to... Regardless of what that setback would be, they always have to be above the Ameren line, which is their easement. And they have to be above six sixty-five, because that is the FEMA flood elevation. Okay?
I was just kind of curious if they...
Yeah, but that's... But, yeah, they do. But that's all of the lots within the city of Osage Beach, so commercial or otherwise.
Yeah, a few years ago, though, we had to have parts of the stuff in and take care of it. There were people that actually approached on Ameren's property. So anyway, I was just kind of curious.
Yeah, no, that's... You know, each house or each structure during the building permit process is reviewed for their location as it pertains to the Lake of the Ozarks, the six sixty-two, and the six sixty-five. So they have to stay above that.
I'm just curious.
Yes, sir.
One more question, sir.
Yeah.
Do you say the zone has already been completed, or is it still in the process of being rezoned?
This is the rezoning hearing tonight, so it has not been rezoned.
All right, are there any additional questions or comments? If not, then the public hearing is now closed, and we...
I think Bob had it.
I'm sorry?
I did have a comment. And this is just a personal observation to maybe put things in perspective. I was opposed to the Cayman Beach development, because I lived in Kelly's Park Cove for fourteen years before that development went in. So the same argument you're using regarding water traffic, street traffic, et cetera, is the same argument I used against your development where you now live. So I'm just putting things in perspective, saying the same arguments you're using are the same arguments people that have been there prior to you have used as well. My parents have lived in the same house they've had since 1979 in Dogwood Estates off Deutran Road. When they purchased that home, they looked out on an undeveloped point. That point is now the largest condominiums, the largest condo complex in the lake. Not only is it the largest condos there, there's also the Bronx at the back of the Cove, and they are boxed in by docks with their Cove. You can oppose change, but you can't stop change. So I'm just putting things in perspective, because I understand where you're coming from. But we have lived that as well. I have lived that as well as has my family.
I have lived there five years. Okay, so what's in the past has happened.
Yes.
What I'm looking at is what's going on now.
I understand. And a lot of your arguments, I understand, too, because I was against the development you live in now for the same reasons.
I'm not against the development. I'm not trying to stop it. What I am looking at is if it needs to be done, Ameren with a nice lake frontage lot, because what we're looking around, all you have to do is go out on that lake in a boat and look at the nice big lots they're doing in Chima, the nice lots they're doing out on the point. Anywhere they're building a house, it's a nice lot. And I think over here, we get a little bit stuck too close together, is my point. I'm not trying to stop development at all. But the other thing with development is, like I said, you've got a lesson on it tonight on that screen, the pipes in this city are shot.
Sure, sure.
That is that particular part of the city, which we incorporated and inherited that sewer dysfunction.
So when you go developing, you have to upgrade water plants, you have to upgrade sewage treatment plants, and you have to pump it all to the... They're going to pay to do that. They're putting in the grinders and sewage treatment plants to do that. But you've taken on one that I just saw tonight. You had a lot of people who are concerned with Tanta or what's going on with their crap over there, right? So the city hereditarily has pipes just like that. We went out and we started shooting cameras and pipes. I'm going to find them a lot in a lot of places, the drum there, because it's just a fact, the pipes roll. So when you do develop, like I said, and I'm not trying to stop it, I even commented the fact that, hey, they put a couple of nice houses up over there. But when you start looking at the grades and the different things they're doing, the driveways, I mean, I mean, you're skating downhill, excavate. Be careful when you excavate. Do the right thing, but the road incorrectly. You're over the Cayman Beach, but it looks just like that down the road, okay? But you've got to have your water upgraded, too, when you do this. That gentleman was just talking about water. You saw the pipes tonight, okay? And that was just in one area. So, and everyone got an education on sewage treatment, which is what it looks like underground. The facility is a whole nother ballpark. That's a very expensive facility, and it just, you keep adding to it. You've got towers going over there, and it's two crappers, and it's every apartment on the topside. Okay, so that just keeps more flowing. On weekends out here, you know they're all full. You know they are.
Kind of like adding that sewer...
You know, it's not. I'm not trying to stop it, and like you're saying, that's not where it's at. But controlling it a little better and just making sure that it's up to far with other homes and different things, that's what we have to look at. And how that Cove's going to turn with docks in it, and, you know, because you're going to have a lot more holes coming in now, and are they going to plow in?
I've lived it. I've lived it.
Yeah, no.
Yes.
You know, we have to trust that, there's someone else, but those are all issues that will take place.
I appreciate your concerns, because like I said, I've stood in your shoes with the exact same things you've said with other developments in my Cove. So I understand where you're coming from.
Right.
So wholeheartedly, I agree.
And I would have been here back in the day agreeing with you.
Correct.
Okay, but do it in a good manner, that's all we're asking. Do it under control, you have the control. So that's all we're asking is existing residents to make sure that, you know, in the future, that sewage will handle it, water handles it, and all these things take place, lake handles it. Things are done properly.
And speaking of that sewage treatment facility over there behind Andy's, that thing gets to spitting so bad, I used to have to pull up my window on my car or I would work every morning. I mean, that thing gets nasty, and you got restaurants over there.
Kevin?
What's being done about that?
Yeah, sir, just to address that, there's equipment coming that will address that. It'll be here probably by next week. You're not going to smell that this summer.
For sure?
You can contact me. I'll buy you lunch. I'll buy you lunch at Andy's.
All right. The public hearing has been closed. We will move on.
Oh.
Yes, thank you.
John?
Yes.
I have a question. For clarification, a couple people have mentioned that there's been a couple homes built over there already. Is that true? What...
No, 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 not on this piece. He's talking about... He's talking about another subdivision that the lots were actually subdivided in the seventies. And somebody just, you know, they're challenging lots, and they've been there...
In the same Cove?
Across the road, they're off of Oak. Right next to Broadwater Bay, there's five new homes that are going on lots that have been existing there for some time. And they are... I mean, they're challenging lots, that's why they hadn't developed yet, but, you know, with the... With the demand that we have had, a guy came in and developed them. And, I mean, they meet setbacks, they meet all their requirements, you know? So... But it is not on this property at all. So...
You're not going to pay a HOA community...
I don't know. We don't control HOAs. Danny?
They are. They are.
That's a different topic.
They are, right?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
The city doesn't actually... I mean, we don't have any control of the HOAs or, you know, even any knowledge with them, so...
That's why I was asking, because it seems like they're doing the wrong thing.
All right, our next item is requesting a first reading of bill number 2214 in ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, adopting an amendment to the zoning map of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri by rezoning a partial of land as described in rezoning case number 418. City planner?
I have nothing further.
All right. Are there any additional questions or comments from the board? Yes, Alderman Ross?
I may be tardy in doing this, for those that are interested, but a couple, three things that have come up. The sewer system. I was part of the sewer board a few years ago, and we took down half of that sewer system treatment plant for a couple of months to do maintenance, cleaning, and so forth, and it ran fine on half-capacity. And I don't believe that we ever hit max, or even eighty percent of the capacity of one side of that system. Now, I realize there's been growth, but we have sewer development charges. There's been a lot of planning over the last twenty or thirty years, and a lot of process has been put in place so that we can accept this growth, okay? And while I appreciate the concern, it's just a matter of information, and I realize that sometimes, you know, people that are new here and so forth don't realize some of the planning and some of the foresight that has gone on, so that we don't have to worry about some of those things, especially for forty lots, okay? That's not going to make a huge impact. I'm talking, sir. You do not have the floor, okay? I've taken... You've taken the floor many times tonight without even being... Without being recognized. And there is order to be done here, okay?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. The water system. The water system was put in in early 2000s, around 2003 to 2005. So that system is relatively new in city... How would I say? Development across the country. On top of that, the Tanta Estates, when you get back to sewer, so apologize for jumping around, is... Was not built by the city. It was built back in probably the sixties. And so that is not a reflection of what the other... The rest of the city's system looks like, okay? Because it's tremendously newer with different materials. The last thing was the lot sizes. There's a list of lot sizes here in the packet with the sketch. And the smallest lot size I see is seventy-four hundred and forty feet, okay? They range from a high of about twenty thousand square feet, if I'm reading this right, and it's small print, but I'm pretty sure I'm right. But there's several, I'm going to say ten to fifteen lots in here, that are at least twelve to fifteen thousand square feet, okay? Most of the remaining smaller lots, if you will, are averaging around eighty to eighty-three hundred square feet, okay? So they're not just building little bitty things that are barely meeting our standards. They are exceeding those standards in lot sizes that they could have chosen to do so with. So I would expect that these will probably be a little nicer homes, since some people are perceiving in the comments. I apologize, sir, I'm still speaking.
Yeah, I know.
Okay?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
You're listening.
Good, that'd be great.
Mr. Calvino, we're past the time for you to speak, okay?
Yeah.
You had your opportunity, and there will be no more opportunity this evening.
Oh, sure.
So if you'd like to... If you'd like to listen.
That's your final night in, so, yeah, we'll let you have your way.
Thank you. Go ahead, Alderman Ross.
So while I understand anyone that comes into this community with buying nicer homes and so forth, and their concern around building small homes, we still have to have a balance, and I don't believe this one is on the far end of that balance. It's somewhere in between. It may not be the largest lots in the city by any means, but there's a mix of... I live on a lot that's right around ten to eleven thousand square feet, platted, I don't know, what was that, forty years ago or better? And we've got ten or twelve lots in here that are well above ten thousand square feet, maybe fifteen of them. So I think the perception that what I've received and listened to the public was, is they were all going to be small lots with small tiny homes. While they're not tremendously wide, they are generally eighty-foot wide. So I don't really see any concerns with this project at this point, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
Well said.
Seeing none, is there a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Osteen, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Morose, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The first reading passes. Our next item is requesting a motion to approve the preliminary plat for the topsider subdivision. City planner?
Yes.
Sir, hold on. I would like to recuse myself from this item and the following item, please.
All right. Thank you very much.
The topsider?
Give Kelly a moment, yeah, please. All right. City planner?
So, as you can see, we've got actually three requests tonight from topsider, okay? The first is the preliminary plat. And typically, we would have seen this before we would have the final plat in front of you on the same night. But basically, what happened in this situation is, is they started out with one engineer and representative that was going to do it one way, that would not require that, and then they got a new contract engineer and legal representative who had some issues and wanted things cleaned up. So basically, we are now going back through the process a little bit backwards, if you will. What I will tell you is, is that at this point, we do have the preliminary plat. The preliminary plat itself shows and meets all the requirements, shows the buildings that we will see in the future, that we, you know, all know is going to be there, and the total of five buildings that have the one hundred and forty acres. there in the total of five buildings that have the one hundred and forty acres. Instead of being three lots, which is not a major subdivision, it is now going to be a total of eight, which is five buildings, a sixth lot, which is the common area that it will be owned by the homeowners association, and then lots seven and eight, which will be the, hopefully, home to the restaurant and hotel that is part of the planned unit development that the city approved. In this particular situation, the preliminary plat itself is ready to go, and I took it to the planning commission with the recommendation to approve, and they forwarded it to you with the same.
All right. Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve? I'm sorry, Alderman Ross?
It's okay. I was letting somebody else go first if they wanted to. Couple of questions. One, lot eight, well, I'm sorry, lot seven shows parking, okay?
Yes.
So is that going to be a common cross-access parking for future hotel, restaurants?
Yes. That's cross-parking.
Okay. And so will that cross-parking agreement be required?
It's, yes, it's part of their requirements, yes.
Okay. All right. And then secondly, was it a unanimous, was there any contention? What was the vote from New Jersey?
It was unanimous, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anything else? If not, then is there a motion to approve? Alderman Ross, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Becker, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Our next item is requesting both a first and second reading of bill number twenty-two fifteen, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, approving the final plat for the topsider subdivision. Again, City Planner?
Yes. Well, this is the final plat. Basically, as you know, this is the plat that is created and then recorded so that the developers can start transferring title of individual units to property owners, new property owners. It meets all the requirements. And as you, if you looked at the report, you know that I was requiring an engineer's estimate and letter of credit to be submitted prior to the final approval. That has been done. It is in Tara's office in the vault. So we do have that in hand. As you have seen, and what I will bring to your attention is, is they are requesting a first and second reading of the final plat. I know it is not typical that we do first and second readings on most things. But in this particular situation, as you all know, some of the contract engineers and, and folks that do the work for these people are in the neighborhood of twelve to eighteen weeks behind, a lot of them, okay? So one of the ways that we can help our developers and help them stay on track is to go ahead and once they do finally get these things done and in their hands, I know this particular one took quite some time, and Mr. Ellsworth can talk, talk about it if you have any questions about that. But it was, it was late and they are, you know, have transfer of titles scheduled. And this is one of the ways that we can assist our developers and then our future property owners to get in their pieces is by accelerating their process a little bit and doing a first and second reading on a plat that meets our code.
All right. Thank you very much. Questions or comments from the board? Alderman Ross?
I guess I need a little more clarification about why we're doing this second reading. I understand it helps them out, but it sounds to me like, I'm trying to figure that out. It sounds to me like maybe their process didn't work well. Is that right?
I don't, I don't necessarily know that it's their process that didn't work well. As you know, once you, you know, when you're trying to do a final plat, one of the things that's required is the building be in place and then sheet rock be up so you can do those things. So at the time that those things are ready for the engineers to come out and survey, they were quite a ways out from getting to them. So it, it's just a, it's a legitimate backup, not in their process, but just their professionals being able to get out there and do it in a manner that is expedient and helps them.
So I guess maybe the better question, if you can answer it, that'd be great.
Yes.
What is the delay of two weeks, which is our normal process, so that there can be public time to gather information and provide input? How, why would that, how does that two weeks affect you?
Mr. Ross, my name is Aaron Ellsworth. I'm a local attorney. I'll try to help explain some of the issues we faced in this. As Mr. Patterson said, we initially started with one engineer, and then it was changed. And it was discovered that the points on the location of the first building were not correct. So the engineering work had to be redone to create this plat. The reason that we are asking for the first and second readings is because that delay got us into the point where we're starting to close condominium units. And getting the first and second reading today is really important to developers so we can start closing, because we can't close unless we record the plat, record in, in the declarations.
So I'm trying to understand, you're able to close within the next two to four weeks on, on those buildings over there that I don't even see windows in and doors? Is that what I think? I'm asking you, is that what I'm hearing you say?
Well, there's some units that are, I'm not the, I'm not on the site doing the construction.
Okay.
So things are constantly moving. And yes, there are units that I understand we were hoping to close next week. I don't think that's going to happen. But we, at the time we're requesting the first and second readings was twenty, thirty days ago. So things are progressing. I don't know when the first closing will be or when the first unit will be ready, but it could be within the next two weeks.
I don't mind helping people out if you can demonstrate the need. I haven't heard the need yet, and I may still support this, but I think that we have to be cognizant of a normal process we have. Now, we do have the right to do first and second readings at night, but there, or on the same night, and we do that whenever there's a significant need to do so.
Yes.
And I haven't yet heard what the significant need to do so is.
Our first closing was scheduled for April fifteenth. I can't tell you that it's going to happen on April fifteenth tonight, but that's when we had scheduled it at the time was we were wanting to close April fifteenth. I don't know where they are on the first units to close. We had eight units that were going to be ready that would have certainly closed before your next, your two, your two weeks on the second.
Do we have COs on those?
No.
No.
You, you don't have to.
You don't need a CO to close?
No.
Just like a new construction. I mean, it's, I understand it because I'm in the finance industry.
Fair enough.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay.
But basically, this plat has to be recorded before they can actually do deeds on those units. Regardless of the state of completion they're in, those unit owners can still purchase them, partial develop, then pick out their finishes with the developer, et cetera, et cetera. But they legally are the owners of that, but they cannot be until this plat is recorded, which is why he's requesting the first and second reading in order for them to move forward with being able to issue deeds of trust and title for each individual unit.
Okay.
Part of the delay is because the first plat was incorrect as far as the specs on that building. They have to basically revise it, get this filed before they can move forward with those sales.
Okay. Very good. I better understand. I appreciate it, because it sounds like you're going to be able to actually put them in people's hands of ownership quicker. Is that what I think I'm hearing?
Well, absolutely. I mean, and you've got to understand too, and I don't want to mislead the, the city here, but it's, it's a moving target on these things and getting construction completed and getting the materials, even down to fixtures and finishes at this point, too. So everything's a moving target. So when we're requesting this, everything's just kind of changing. And they're going to close as soon as they can. I mean, title's ready. This is the next step. I was hoping to walk, walk these down myself on Monday or Tuesday to record the plat and the declarations so that that's set and ready to go for whenever we get, you know, approval from the city on occupancy.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We appreciate you guys approving the second reading this evening.
Appreciate you being here and being able to speak.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to approve first reading?
So moved.
Alderman Becker, and I have a second from Alderman Osteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading passes. Second reading by title only of ordinance number
twenty-two fifteen, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, approving the final plat of topsider subdivision in Osage Beach, Camden County, Missouri. Are there any additional questions from the board? With none, is there a motion to approve second reading?
So moved.
Alderman Morose, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Ross, roll call, please.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Becker?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Schuman?
All right. I think those are the only two items that Alderman Schuman cannot participate in, so if someone would please ask her to come back in.
Todd, will you get?
Todd, could you get?
Hi. Kelly.
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 Let the record show that Alderman Schuman has returned to the dais.
All right. Our next item is requesting first reading of bill number twenty-two sixteen, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, approving a funding agreement for consideration of the Arapahoe LLC and Grand Teton Mountain Investment LLC proposal for a community improvement district and transportation development district for improvements to beach road and other projects. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, members of the board. This is simply the funding agreement that, that the city has negotiated with Arapahoe LLC and Grand Teton Mountain, which essentially, I think Backwater Jacks is the, the short way to refer to these guys. They're going to be doing some work and they're going to be also helping us redevelop Gulf Road. What this does is it approves their deposit under our community improvement district policy. We will then use this money in the next ordinance, bill twenty-two seventeen, to hire Mark Spikerman at Gilmore Bell, who will advise us professionally on the adoption of the community improvement district and the transportation development district. We negotiated this stuff out with the lawyers from Armstrong Teasdale, and I don't think there are any other nuances that, that are in any way different from what you see routinely on these kind of matters.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the board? With none, is there a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Ross, do I have a second? Alderman Becker, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading passes. Our next item is requesting first reading of
bill number twenty-two seventeen, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, approving a professional service agreement with the law firm of Gilmore and Bell for services related to the consideration of Arapahoe LLC and Grand Teton Mountain Investment LLC proposal for a community improvement district and a transportation development district for improvements to beach road and other projects. Again, City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, members of the board. This is how the money that you just approved, accepting through the funding agreement, will be spent. The city has used Gilmore Bell services for over twenty years. Gilmore Bell was the lawyers who helped the city do the first Pruitt Point TIF back in the, the two thousand. We have used their, their law firm services through Sid Douglas, then through Mark, not Mark, through David Bushick, then now Mark Spikerman. And this will simply hire Gilmore Bell again for their services. This is, they are the specialists in this area, and we've been pleased with their results ever since I've been here.
All right. Thank you. Questions or comments? With none, is there a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Schuman, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Morose, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading passes. Our next item is requesting a first reading
of bill number twenty-two eighteen, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with B&amp;H Cleaning, expanding their cleaning services for a yearly not to exceed amount of forty-seven thousand dollars. Assistant City Administrator, please.
Yes, Mayor, members of the board. At the budget workshops last summer, we discussed expanding the cleaning of restrooms in the city hall building and the public works building to five days a week. Currently, the, the public restrooms right outside here are cleaned five days a week, but all of the other restrooms in this building and the restrooms in the public works buildings are only cleaned three days a week. So this is just simply expanding the services that we are using with our existing vendor for cleaning services to, to basically clean all restrooms in both buildings five days a week. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I, I do recommend approval.
All right. Thank you. Questions from the board? With none, is there a motion to approve first reading?
So moved.
Alderman Becker, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Ross, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading passes. Our next item requested first reading of bill number twenty-two nineteen, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number six with Cochrane Engineering to assist the city with a new parks master plan for an amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Assistant City Administrator, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. This project was bid out in, in late December, and the bid opening was on February the fourth at two P.M. The city did receive four bids. The bid tab is attached. Gina, Nicole, our parks manager, and myself reviewed all these bids thoroughly. We, we are recommending Cochrane Engineering. They, their, their proposal stood out to us based upon their attention to detail, their experience with these types of projects, and their knowledge of the city. I did reach out to Sullivan, to the city of Sullivan, Missouri, as well as the city of Warrington and the city of Union. Specifically, I talked to all three of their city administrators and some of their parks management staff extensively to just get a, a better idea of exactly what they did for them and, and whether or not they were happy with the outcome. All of them spoke glowingly of the work that was done by Cochrane and Cochrane's partner on this Ballard King. So after we, you know, after I had those conversations, I was pretty well convinced that, that this is the right decision. This is the right engineering firm for us to use for, for these services. This is very exciting for us. You know, our, our current master plan is almost twenty years old, and, and we are really looking forward to seeing what they can do to help us, whether it be the possibility of, or the feasibility of some type of sports complex or expansion on soccer in some way, expansion in baseball. And then, and just in general terms, just helping us to decide what we're going to do as far as maybe playground expansion. We all know that we need more parking at both parks. So that's something that I know we have in the budget, but we wanted to make sure we got this going first before we start to take a look at this. All very exciting. I've, I've really just kind of summarized their plan. They do detail out their plan quite significantly in the supplement that is attached. And I do have Dave Van Leer here. If you do have any questions. This project is going to be a little over budget. The budget for this was thirty thousand dollars. Their fee is forty-eight thousand five hundred, I believe. And I do believe there is a item following this to amend the budget that Gina will go over. I do recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions the board has.
All right. Thank you. Questions or comments? Alderman Becker?
What, can you compare, give me a better idea to compare Cochrane's proposal with, say, the council of local governments?
It's really an experience issue. The experience, the, the number of these type of master plans that Cochrane has done far exceeds, you know, anything that the council has done. And I'm, I'm not here to denigrate anything they've done. I'm sure they've done a great job. But just looking at the experience that Cochrane had with doing these types of plans, it is, is quite, quite a difference, sir.
I would follow up with two other tidbits, too. There, there are four different categories, scored categories that we always rank proposals. And council of local governments, the capacity, the staff capacity, the familiarity with the city, and like Mike said, the experience in this level of master planning just didn't compare to the, to what Cochrane or the other three. You know, the other three had, had a lot more experience, too. So I would add the other two bits of that when we combine the scoring.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, is there a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Ross, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Schuman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading passes. Our next item is requesting a first reading of bill number twenty-two twenty, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending ordinance number twenty-one seventy-eight, adopting the two thousand and twenty-two annual budget transfer funds for necessary expenses for the Osage Beach Park Master Plan. City Administrator?
Yes, Mayor, members of the board. So thank you for the approval. Like Mike said, we are very excited to update our park master plan. We've gotten a lot of opportunity with the land that we already own as well. When we, when we estimated this in the budget at thirty thousand, we try to do the best estimations we can when we're preparing budget back in August for the future year. So not really having that true defined scope outlined that early in the process. We did budget thirty thousand. After we defined the scope, we now, we need forty-eight five. Unrestricted funds in general fund can handle the funding of this addition to the project. And we will also keep our eye out potentially with some ARPA, too. I know when you read my big report that I'll explain later in my comments, there's a possibility that some of these projects can also fill in some gaps should we decide. But there are unrestricted funds in general fund that doesn't sway or affect other line items. So I would recommend approval.
All right. Thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve first reading?
So moved.
Alderman Morose, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Becker, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading passes. Our next item is requesting a motion to adopt the city's mission statement as modified. City Administrator?
Yes, Mayor, members of the board. So we've finally come to the end of this process, or at least stage one. I guess we could go through this every few years if we want to. Back in March, we had the last session on the mission statement as modified. This particular version was directed to move forward, so I have put it into some formal, formal structure for our mission statement. And now I'm just asking to adopt the mission statement as modified as of April seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. We annually ratify our mission statement as part of the budget process, so you'll see this again next September, October, sometime when we're at that point with budget. So this is a motion to adopt the city's mission statement as the board directed as modified as of tonight.
All right. Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? With none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Alderman Becker, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Morose, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. All right. Our final item for tonight, request
a motion to approve the repair service of a hundred twenty-five horsepower submersible pump for LSKK dash forty-nine from JCI Industry for twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Public Works Operations Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a hundred twenty-five horsepower submersible pump from KK four-nine, station KK four-nine, which is, which is in Tantera. It's right off of...
Excuse me.
It's, no problem.
Sorry.
This is located in Tantera, right off of Tantera Road, near the Wing Gate Building. This is a, this is a duplex station, meaning a two-pump station. So the station is currently with, working with only one pump. Our sewer superintendent is assessing the viability of running this station with a smaller pump in our inventory temporarily. However, at this time, we don't know if that's viable or not. It's an ongoing thing. There is an estimated twenty-two week lead time to repair this pump. The city has worked with JCI, the company we're tasked to repair this pump, and has done many pumps for us over many years. This is a sole source purchase, repair from JCI, and it's the only company in mid-Missouri that has the capacity to work on a pump this large. Anything else, we'd have to take, take it out of state. And I recommend approval.
All right. Thank you. Questions? Yes?
So we don't, we have one working, we, it's a two-system, and we don't have a backup. Is that correct?
Correct, sir.
So we're hoping it lasts for twenty-two weeks?
That's, that's exactly the situation.
We'll be pumping it daily. Is that right?
Yeah. I, I agree with your sentiment that, that two pumps is one and one is none. But it's like an engine on an airplane going over the ocean. We have one pump.
Okay. Thank you.
It's an uncomfortable position to be in.
We don't usually take questions, but go ahead, sir.
Is there any warranty?
Warranty on a rebuilt pump? Is that your question, sir?
Warranty on a rebuilt pump is your question, sir?
Yeah. It will have a, a short, maybe six months, like off the cuff. I don't have the contractor in front of me. But on a rebuilt pump, typically, a rule of thumb is you're going to get half the life every time you rebuild it. It's, it's, it's a large pump, being a hundred twenty-five horsepower, hundred twenty-five horsepower pump, so it's costing... It's, it's a large pump, being 125 horsepower, 125 horsepower pump, so it's cost-effective to rebuild them. But as to your question of the exact warranty, I don't have that in front of me.
But it would not be the same as on a new pump? All right. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Alderman Ross, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Becker, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We now move to communications. We start with members of the board of Alderman. Alderman Ross?
Real quick, I just want to recognize Kerry for the way he handled the public hearing earlier on the redevelopment property. I think he did a great job and thank you, Kerry. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Morose?
I have nothing.
Alderman Osteen?
I have a few notes I jotted down during this evening's discussions regarding TIF programs. The TIF programs offered by the city of Osage Beach have been instrumental in our business and economic development. Without the TIF programs we have offered, we would not have a Dearburgs, or a Hy-Vee, or a Menards, or a Lowe's, et cetera, et cetera. Comments were made earlier about the fact there is a lack of a supermarket on this side of the city in Osage Beach. Let's imagine a world where there is no grocery store in the city of Osage Beach, period, which without these TIFs, that would be the reality. We, as elected officials of this city, have a vow to basically act in the best interests of our citizens. If we were to unilaterally oppose any future TIFs, we would be derelict in that vow. That's all I have to say.
Alderman Becker?
Thank you.
I'd just like to recognize Kerry Bell and her staff on the Excellence in Financial Planning Award.
Very nice, Kerry.
Thank you for doing that, and that is something I should have done at the beginning of the meeting. This is actually the 22nd time that Kerry and her department, you know, has received this award, which I think is very appropriate because it's in 2022. So congratulations, Kerry, and your staff and team as a whole. Thank you, Alderman Becker, for doing that. Alderman Schuman?
I would just like to reach out for the Parks Department. I really appreciate all the work that they put in. The T-ball baseball programs have just started. We had our first practices this week. That was very interesting, and yes, I do agree with you with the parking. There definitely needs to be more. However, they've done a really good job in coordinating the times of the practices and the games to allow people to come in and out, so that's very much appreciated and hoping the games are going to start in May and June, hoping some people get to get out there because it is hilarious watching the kids run the wrong way on the field until they learn it. But I really appreciate it. I know that there's a lot of work that goes into scheduling that and finding volunteers and training and all of that, so.
All right. Thank you. Now we move on to staff. City Administrator?
A couple of things. First, don't leave because I do have master things I want real signatures on for the mission statement. I know Kevin's out, so I'll catch him. So don't leave before I get you with a blue pen, so it all looks uniform. I appreciate that. Second, I appreciate your patience. I know we've been working and talking and discussing on the ARPA, and it's like a moving target, but with the final rule being published by the U.S. Treasury, I was able to kind of put thoughts together. I think I attend at least one webinar a week that's still, it's like drinking out of a fire hose, but it's not just us, you know, whether it's at state level, county level. Luckily for us, our reporting is more streamlined. We got our money directly one way. If I worked for a county, I would probably just have to do nothing but that. So I do feel for the counties that's got to figure all this reporting and stuff out. So we're legal, we're reporting, but the further discussion isn't be needed. That memo is just an attempt to kind of figure out where we've been, what the final rule, how that helped us. We obviously, I put some draft together just on our budget stuff, but the board really needs to, you know, think about their strategic and vision goals. I know we're going to have our strategic planning session come up here in just a couple short months, so obviously that will be a hot item ticket on that agenda which will get out. So I know there's still more work to come, but I do caution you, I don't feel the city needs to get in a hurry to officially obligate because we've got a lot of other stuff we still need to know, but good planning goes a long ways because once we do get going, 2024, we'll be here before you know it. Because only in about five short months will we be starting on the 23 budget, so I know that's hard to believe. Haven't even made it to the 4th of July yet. The other thing, I have two recognitions I want to do. We recognize our city employees at various increments in their service order levels, but we also include elected officials for that. So when you officially became on the payroll for your duties as the elected official, we started the clock with that. And we have two milestones that happened this April. Alderman Ross is being acknowledged for five years. Now, I know he spent many years before the five on commissions and committees, and I apologize, this particular word doesn't show that. And so I have a nice pin here for you and a certificate because I do want your picture. And then Mayor Oliveri, 15 years.
That's awesome.
That is a long time, and I know, just like Alderman Ross, a lot of you all started on committees and commissions, and so technically this year will be his 19th with the city in some form or fashion. So I do have some pins and certificates that I would like everybody to help me congratulate these two elected bodies. We know it is a hard job to be in public service, whether you're whichever side on the bench you are, so I know it's a career that's sometimes daunting, so please join me and congratulate, and then if you don't mind, let Mike take our picture. Do you want to do them together?
Yeah.
Okay. Sure. You might have to open them. You get a little extra in there because you're 15 years. You can give a card next time.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Get in there.
All right. Here we go. You ready? All right. One, two, three. I'm going to take a couple of here. Been accused of not being a good photographer, so.
I don't know who did that.
It's true.
Thank you, guys. And that's all I have.
All right. City Attorney?
Well, you know, democracy proceeds, so first, congratulations to the re-elected Alderman. Welcome, Mayor-elect Army. I will tell you, usually we don't go two hours straight without a break. Mayor Oliveri, we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Yes.
And otherwise, legally, you guys are under control.
City Clerk?
No, you know, I don't have anything.
Chief?
Nothing.
City Planner?
I have nothing, sir.
City Treasurer?
No report.
Public Works Operations Manager?
More than a couple of times this evening, the city's water production and sewer treatment capacity is coming in question, and I would like to mirror Alderman Ross's comments and just make sure everyone understands, Tantera is not representative of the rest of Osage Beach. Tantera was a private system that was developed under, basically under a budget in terms of, with expediency and was not made with city standards and not for maintenance, not under materials, not in engineering, and not in construction. So again, I just want to say for the record that, you know, because there were some pretty scary photos up there, that for the citizens of Osage Beach, that is not representative of the city's collection system. And then also, Mayor, the statement that plant capacity is actually under capacity from what they had anticipated 10 years ago. We're actually, in the projection, we're still underneath that, that bar, so. And then again, with water production, on our peak day in summer, we still have wells on the shelf that we're not using and that we're not overbuilt. We just have good redundancy, so I'd just like to state that for the record that we have no capacity issues. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. HR?
Yeah, I just wanted to give an update on our vacancies. Currently, I have eight jobs open, and that is for 16 full-time vacancies that we have. The majority of those are in the interview, testing, or background stage, so we only have two jobs that are still taking applications at this time.
Great. That's a major improvement. Thank you. Assistant City Administrator?
Thanks, sir. I do want to just remind everybody that not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, April the 16th, we do have our annual Osage Beach Easter egg hunt. This is, this is an event that we started about five years ago. It's a great event. It's one of my favorite events. I really enjoy it. I would invite all of the Aldermen and the public and use Mayor-elect to come join us. It's going to be a great time. It starts at 11:00 a.m. We have a free hot dog lunch. Victory Church is our partner with this event, and they are once again stepping up and going to provide a free hot dog lunch to everybody. And then, of course, we'll have our egg hunts. We do have four categories, and we'll use our three baseball fields for those. So 11 to 2 on Saturday, April the 16th. Hope to see y'all there. Hope we have a great time, and I hope we have good weather, too, so. Should be a lot of fun. Thank you.
It's a great event. Kids really enjoyed. It's so cute to see so many little ones out there having such a good time, and some of the bigger ones, believe it or not. All right. Building official.
I have nothing to report, man.
All right. Airport?
Nothing.
And Mr. Van Leer with Cochrane Engineering?
Just wanted to say thanks to the board with regards to the Parks Master Plan. That's an exciting project, and we're looking forward to working on with the city, so thank you. Other than that, I have nothing unless there's any questions from the board.
Any questions of Mr. Van Leer?
All right.
Yes.
So on the, on the Park Master Plan, will that encompass just our current parks or any additional parks?
I believe the intent is that it's going to focus on the City Park and Peacock Park areas and possibly expansions of those parks.
Okay.
I don't believe the current intent is to study new parks.
Okay.
Basically, the land we currently own, which we do have some areas, even like behind City Hall, but I don't believe there was a nugget in there that went out searching for other, other land.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.